Call being ordered, we'll call.
Mayor Westegreger?
Yep.
Trader?
Yep.
Leaning?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Public forum. Consent agenda. With the addition of the active building.
Yeah, with the addition of that building. For the, for, in the house out there. Go across the street from here.
I'll make the motion. We'll call.
Trader?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed resolution of necessity covering the Sack Beach infrastructure project.
Mr. Mayor, on that public hearing, Jim Van Dyke, on behalf of the Peterson Children's Trust and Roger Peterson. It's our position that there is no special benefit for this road to the Peterson Children's Trust and under the Iowa code, they should not be in the assessment district. And without showing a special benefit, then they should not be assessed. I understand it's adjacent to the Peterson Trust land and not part of the Peterson Trust land. I've yet to see the formula that was used to calculate their assessment, but whatever it is, it should be zero because it's farmland. They intend to keep farming and therefore they have no special benefit. Unless and until there's such a showing, we strenuously object to any assessment to the Peterson Children's Trust.
Are we gonna tell us if we're not gonna assess them anyway?
Just the, all the special assessment documents have been prepared. They're in the council's packet. They again start on page five. And you work your way back to the schedule. That was on page 12, but they're all prepared by Snyder and Associates. With the idea that the benefited properties are the adjacent properties. It's Boulders and the Peterson Trust, and those are the two properties that were included in the special assessment district and proposed for the assessment.
Any more here put on the public hearing?
The other thing that had been, that the council has always planned on is that the property for the Peterson Children's Trust is eligible for ag deferment. And so long as we get the written request for a deferral, it will be deferred as so long as it continues to be assessed as ag land. The deferral is supposed to be written and to me within 10 days of the hearing.
No more further info. The public hearing is now closed. We're up to resolution 1122.
Unless you would propose that there would be any amendments to this, this, the resolution is prepared, in case there are any amendments and we didn't hear any amendments proposed, and if that's the case, we would proceed on to the next resolution.
You have a motion on 1122?
No, there would be no motion. We'll go to 1123.
Resolution of necessity 23.
Do you need me further checking on anything about first lien?
Yeah, but that issue come up about whether, within this petition and waiver, our attorney had originally asked for the signatures of lien holders on that, feeling that a petition and waiver would compromise our status as first lien holder on the special assessment. As we talk through this process more and recognizing that this was not exclusively a petition and waiver special assessment, but in fact you're still working through the public notice and public hearing process, that he was very secure in the fact that no, that the city has retained all of our rights as first lien. So by working through this process, we've retained our rights on that and he was very secure with that.
Ben, I think the only thing we might suggest is getting Bob Johnston to send some kind of writing.
I know. Excuse me, I do have that. It's an email.
Well, I guess I'd just like to go on record that, you know, the whole RISE grant thing, that we didn't get anything from them with that, that if they sold a lot and it's something that isn't covered under the RISE grant, the DOT has to put the money back. They're not liable, we could be the ones paying for that. And kind of the regular rule we'd have to go through to get first lien if they would ever sell. I mean, I guess we already promised them we'd build in the road and it's the only way to do it. I mean, if we, if I don't, we'll get us on this, you know, if it needs a four-fifth majority, we're gonna figure out another way to pay it, basically.
Yeah, that's a, that's a true statement. And the other, the other side of it, Ben, is that we're, we're now into, into it for about $25,000. We were about, tonight we approved another engineering bill, so up to $23,000 on engineering and a couple thousand on legal fees so far.
So we're already ways deep into it, I guess.
Anybody else? Resolution 1123, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve resolution 1123.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Motion directed, city folks to file certified copies.
Yes, I might as well make that motion too.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Leaning?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
And resolution 1124?
It's just the next procedural step as far as directing the engineer to formally prepare the detailed plan specs, the notice appearing and the notice of, notice to bidders in the form of contract, with the anticipation that this would go out to bid in January. There's a review period with the DOT since it's through that RISE grant, there's 30-day review period on that. Plans are ready to go in, basically anytime here, within the next few days, the plans are ready to go to the DOT, so it will be ready to try to let bids on that in January.
Is there a motion on resolution 1124?
I'll make that motion.
Second? I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1125.
Okay, this is a resolution dealing with the interest rate on our drinking water SRF. So after, after 10 years, the SRF program resets the interest rate to a lower interest rate if that's what's being issued currently. So we had originally been under, under a contract with an interest rate of 3.84% and now when they issue SRF loans, it's at 3%, so they do allow us to go to 3%. We do need to pass this resolution in order to accept their interest rate reduction.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 444. Recreation fires.
The third reading of that ordinance on, on the recreational fires.
Everybody still happy with that?
Uh, yeah, we've heard no more comments on that.
Motion on ordinance 444.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 444.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Hoss?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Ordinance 445.
It'll be the second reading of the ordinance pertaining to the definitions of family and dwelling units.
Would you rather talk on this?
I think.
Landlords all.
Our landlord committee had come up with the definitions.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Trader?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1126.
Okay, so now that we're through the process of all of those ordinance changes, we're now ready to work through the recodification process. Okay, and remember we did that, those 12 ordinances, we didn't, we didn't have to publish all of those ordinances because we're going to work through this process of a public hearing. So what this resolution will do, will establish the date for a public hearing, it'll be at the next city council meeting. But we gotta hold this public hearing on it and then you'll, you'll be presented with an ordinance to pass that accepts the newly codified ordinance. Okay? But this resolution establishes the next public hearing date.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution 1126.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Leaning?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
The resolution 1127, is there any requests?
There's a variance request from Lon Doos. We had a board of adjustment meeting earlier this evening, and the board did approve the request from Lon to be granted this variance with one minor change actually, in what is the resolution, where I had proposed a setback of seven feet to account for being one foot closer and, and some overhang, the, the variance was issued for four and a half feet from the public alley. Lon, you wanna talk about that any?
Well, you know, we, we did it for four and a half feet. I don't know that it'll be that close, but I wanted it out in the open that if it would end up that way, that it was, everybody knew about it, so there wasn't any problems.
Any neighbor issues?
Uh, no, I actually talked to Donny, which is right next door, the guy who moved in from Colorado. I talked to him, asked him, I brought him over there, says, "You have a problem with this?" 'Cause you know, I, the deal with Andy Meredith and that, I just was trying to cover all my bases and, and, you know, and he didn't have a problem with it. Scott sent letters to other homeowners in that area, didn't appear to have any issues. Some of them were here tonight, just, I guess Tex Hanky was here tonight, but he didn't say anything. I hadn't talked to him, but, but I think, I think everybody was okay with it.
Yep, the, the board did end up recommending, or actually approving the variance, four to nothing, just not was the move. So it comes to the council then to either validate the issues of this variance or your only other action would be to remand it back to the board if you wanted them to have further consideration, you cannot deny it.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We'll call. Trader?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Motion to approve the building from that application?
Yep.
I'm making the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Okay, lease of the copier.
So we reviewed and demoed three different copies. The comparison is on page 27. And we would propose that, you know, in, in the end, cost-wise, they're all really close to the same average monthly cost by the time you, you throw in the lease payment and bet it very slightly on cost per copy. But we would propose to you, to purchase the Toshiba one, which actually does come in lowest of the, of the average cost by just a little bit. But here's the, here's the main reason why, you know, she, Kay likes the machine, everything's really good, but it does some really, really good stuff with color photos. So the one, one on the right is our current copier, and then the one on the left would be the new one, so.
I'm an old truck driver. Usually if it doesn't have a steering wheel and a airship, I'm not too interested, but what, what is this 80 GB compared to the 160, is that the?
It's gigabyte size of the intro.
Is there any reason why this would still be right size was?
Money made for.
Okay, I just, that's the only thing I noticed when we, when I was going through it, that's why I wanted to ask that question.
Is that the only gap?
Yep.
I thought it was up, I sat rooming hours and I thought that was one or the other.
Yep, last one that we tried and.
So it's the, which one?
Toshiba 3040C1, 129.54.
Got smaller gigabytes though.
Oh, yeah.
Just in case if, if size is important to you.
Size matters.
Yeah, size matters.
Do you raise the cost of what we charge people to use them?
I, you gotta look at the far right column, which is our current costs. And you get right down to it at the bottom, it is just, you know, it's dramatically less expensive than what we have right now.
And why do we think that is? I guess I don't understand it, that's the big difference.
Per, per color cost, per, per copy cost.
So ink is cheaper primarily?
Uh, they, you know, we don't buy toner or anything, we pay a per copy cost. And this one deals primarily, the big difference is in color, where currently, we would pay 12.17 cents and, and under the Toshiba, it's five cents. And.
And who is this one through?
It is through Midwest Office Automation and their main office of Sioux City. But they run service throughout the whole area.
And then we add an hour's through the place and so on?
Through office elements, yep.
A lot of them are personal questions.
Was this a one year lease and?
This is a five year lease.
They know once before we consider filing, when we decide that wasn't. That was a deliberate decision.
No, not really. They, you see what the top line is, the, is purchase price, but really, I didn't, we didn't do a whole lot of checking to see what the per copy costs are on there. We also quoted a buyout of our current one.
That's what they want.
It's 2,200 bucks, but we get to pay those, you know, continue to pay the same copy cost and it's, we're expensive that way.
Then we have to supply and tell them everything, correct?
No, you continue to pay the copy cost and they provide.
Copy cost, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I'd say if Kay likes it and you like it, you're the ones that be dealing with it, so.
I think we're, she is very diligent about researching copiers. She, she really was.
Well, if they work great, they're great, but if they don't.
Yeah, yeah, true.
You have a motion on the lease?
I'll make it.
Motion?
Second.
We'll call.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Annual financial report.
It's on page 28. That's just the front page of the report, same thing that was published in the, in the newspaper. The report has to be sent into the, to the states and we'd ask for the, for the council's approval on, that's just a little update on our, on our audit though. And the audit is, all the fieldwork's been done a long time ago, she's just finishing up the audit report and hopes to have everything done before the end of the month on that.
Those are, Larry, things that they didn't like or?
No, we've seen a draft of it and everything, there was no, no irregularities. This one I would just answer any questions if it makes any sense to you at all. This is one of those things you gotta publish in the paper, lets it really tell ya.
There's no questions given, may I please? I'll settle. Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Leaning?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
John Deere Moore.
Sorry.
$500.
I think we oughta be pretty happy with that. Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Oh, you accept that? I'll second that, Lee.
Okay, we'll call.
Leaning?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Hoss? Yes.
Okay, electric rates, water, sewer.
All right, well, I wanna talk through this a little bit, and it starts on page 29. This is that same spreadsheet that was in the packet last time. This is, is the study from an MPP Energy about determining revenue needs for, it started out with last year and then for this upcoming year. So the year that we are looking at would be the 2012 year, as far as determining those revenue needs, and that's where it proposes that 11.9% increase. This is the same as what we had talked about this time last year, that the year two increase was, was going to be that much. So everything's consistent with what we had talked about in the past. So if you flip to the next page though, on page 30, these are the proposed percent increases across each class then. Cause we do want, you know, each class certainly to be pulling its own weight as far as what the associated costs are to serve that. But this still has kinda that 3% guideline built into it, that we were going at 11.9% for an overall increase and the rates would be, for each class would be 3% plus or minus from that. So that's why you see the, the deviation in the, the difference in that, in the difference percentage column. That makes sense to you, that rural residential has, has a lower percent increase and you see the highest one is the public authority. But also note that demand charges will continue to, to go up quite a little bit, it's proposed at 13 to 6%.
Have you heard anything from EVAPO or anybody like that?
No, yeah, this is.
Those are the people who are really.
No, I'm just gonna, are we still quite a bit lower than like REC for?
We, by far.
Okay.
I'm just concerned because I know EVAPO is thinking long-term and that's a great thing, just don't wanna scare them away, but if they haven't said that.
Well, this has just been discussion so far with, with the council too, just kinda bringing this out into the open really now for the, for the first time about getting it out to the public, what these numbers are, are proposed to be, I think that.
Well, I don't think this is the first time, Scott. Last week we passed the first one, it was all in there that this is.
Yep, it was gonna happen again, EVAPO. That is the, the proposal for percentages. Let's flip to the next, page 31 then. This is where you actually see what they proposed for rates. So this is, this is the proposal for, yeah, I hope I didn't screw this up, 'cause I did. Where, excuse me, the current rates and then what the proposed rates are. Cause it, it has some errors in it, because the customer charge, current customer charge for residential is 14 bucks, it's not proposed to change. So you can see that the first 1,000 kilowatt hours is at 6.3 cents currently, and after that's 4.5. That proposes to go up to 6.9 and 4.7. And for each one of these, what I've done is come up with a small user and average user. I apologize, but that thing is completely wrong, I gave you the wrong year.
Scott, is it, is it still in the same role as it used to be when the rural areas one and a half times where it is city then, or not?
And that had, that had applied to water sewer, on one and a half. Rural area for, for electric just has a different rate class. I gave you the wrong information in the back and I gotta go print out, print out a different one.
Try out that new printer.
There we go.
We're gonna need it in color.
Curtis, can you cut to a commercial break?
Jerry, the, the, the engineer bases it on the cost to serve that customer, is how it's based on, and that's why the.
I think it costs more to serve a customer in a rural area than it would be in the city, wouldn't it?
It does.
So the rate was, you know, cheaper in the rural areas.
The big increase is less, Jerry, but I think the rate is still higher.
If you look at the, the cost per kilowatt, Jerry, and then also, they pay for the first 2,000, where we, our step is the first thousand.
Form is different then.
Right, it is. But it's, but it's actually based on how, customers are far away from town, you know, one transfer basically feeds one customer.
It just seems, it never, it never the power, you know, they, you know, they a lot, a lot more expensive than it's right in the city, it would be.
That probably helps out with farm buildings that sit and only get used during the harvest.
That's why the customer, yeah, the customer charges. That's, the customer charge is based just to have the service there without any kilowatt sold.
And there's probably a lot of places only get used like one or two months a year and.
Yes.
They sit, but you still gotta have lines to.
The customer charge is the charge to serve that customer just for the infrastructure. A kilowatt hour is, is the power, the cost of electricity to sell it to that customer.
Is there more you can tell some jokes right now?
Curtis, I figured you'd be out knocking on doors tonight, the night before the election.
This is 1,100 houses yesterday.
Holy smokes.
That's more than the whole county.
Did you go to every house in town? Yeah.
You went to each one?
Well, I flyer'd each one, I have a detailed flyer about my plan for business recruitment. I figured since the paper wasn't covering the rates.
Yeah, you could've done all my.
Let me give you some. I don't think I worked that hard.
I said, since, since our newspaper record isn't covering the rates, I thought maybe I'd go and put my own information out.
I do like that our newspaper does that, meet the candidates. Kind of puts you up here in the headlights look, but. I remember mine was like this much and some peoples were like a page and a half and I went, oh boy.
Somewhat bigger dreams. Yeah, but look what you started with, with setting out the flyer thing.
Yeah.
Now it's how, that's a necessity.
Nobody's looking here.
What must've worked.
Everybody here is trader, they think one of them wants the money.
Think you got big money. You don't? There goes that idea.
Sorry about that.
You do one that says 2012. Did you get one though? Did you get one?
Should've given the electric guy a look, shouldn't we?
Hey, I don't think you sit back there.
I did, I walked in behind you.
This makes quite a little bit more sense. Where we're looking at the residential one where the current customer charge is $14, it was proposed to go to $15. First 1,000 kilowatt hours are at 6.9 cents, we propose to go to 7.5 cents. And over at 1,000 kilowatt hours, it's 4.7, and proposed to go to. And over at 1,000 kilowatt hours, it's 4.7, and proposed to go to 6.2. Okay, so, as you compare the small and average and large user, you see what happens to the percentage increase on that. For the small guy or the average guy, it is running about 8%. For the larger user, the percentage increase is a lot bigger, and it has to do with that second step. What is now 4.7 cents is proposed to go to 6.2 cents. And as you look through these rates, that's what you would see, is that the higher user, percentage-wise, tends to have a higher percentage increase. And that's, you know, the philosophy there is, is in this time of, you know, energy conservation, that type of stuff, you're really looking for your higher users to, you know, responsibly use the power, I guess we could, maybe is a way to put it. But if they end up using more, they end up paying more. So, you know, I'm interested in your thoughts on that philosophy.
I'm, I'm, it costs me $300 a month. What? I'm pretty sure that's my first year.
Well, this is the proposal from NMPP. You know, if you say, no, geez, I don't want the higher users to have to get doing too much worse than I normally do.
I'm not going there because I'm not, I'm one of the higher users. But, you know, I can see that it'll cost my daughter $2.80 a month, and I think she could probably swing that if it be the big days.
Oh, yeah.
Can you go over three tiers?
Yeah, let's just kind of walk through the rest of them. You see, the rural, the customer charge is $19, proposed to stay that way. And you see, the larger tier on both rural and commercial, as we see it next to it, is the first 2,000 kilowatt hours. So, commercial folks pay, on the first 2,000, they pay that higher rate. So, it's at 8.5 cents now, proposed to go to 8.8. And again, over 2,000, it's at 5 cents now, proposed to go to 6.5. So, see what happens to the percent increase for the larger user. In that farm use, oftentimes, though, it really is the guy who's drawing or something like that, and it's a larger, large use for a couple, two, three months.
So, their price goes down after 2,000?
Yeah, well, it does on the, it does on the residential also. Second tier is cheaper than the first tier.
I guess you're up, pay attention, buddy.
Then, as you look at commercial on the back, again, no proposed change in the customer charge from 8 cents to 8.8 cents on the first 2,000, but from 4.5 cents to 6 cents on anything over 2,000. So, you can see how that percent increase plays out again for what would be the larger user. Okay? Then, that three-phase demand, customer charge is currently $25, proposed to go to 30. So, that is the minimum charge that folks would get assessed. The big thing now, and this was the largest kind of single point of increase last time, too, dealt with the cost of demand KW power. And it will be, proposed to be pretty large. Again, it's $9.75 per KW right now, and is proposed to go to $11. Okay, and the kilowatt hours is always consistent at the three-point, it had been 3.32, proposed to be 3.8 cents. So, if you look at this, though, as far as the average three-phase user, and it's hard to come up with averages because everybody is really different in regards to three-phase power, but if the average user, as far as state bank, you can see what their annual bills would be, excuse me, their monthly bill. And that larger user, if we said EVAPCO's one of the larger users, see that in this case, there's not a dramatic change in the percent increase. The only change, you know, really revolving around that customer charge. That make sense?
Do you think by raising it, the three-phase from last year, do you think will push any businesses away that were looking, come here, or... Is that quite a jump, or...
Well...
Because, I mean, that's, you know, the difference is coming, or a factor or something is looking to come, I mean, that's one thing we're gonna look at, is the three-phase cost.
Do we have a, what, Sack City charges? Do you know that?
We do, but I didn't pull any of that stuff out. You got those comparables, Bill? From...
I found them just the way.
RE season and Mid-Americans and...
Is that in this book here, Scott?
Last year's, I'm sure. Well, I don't know if it's in the book, but I certainly do have it.
Didn't we talk last year a little more about having this advisory plan in order to stay ahead of the curve a little bit?
Yeah, but I think we also talked about if things were right, we maybe wouldn't have to go a little further than that.
Is everything right?
Not as of this month, we're still carrying a little negative balance in the electric fund. But it's going in the right direction. Just, again, the concept here is that each, each rate class pays their own way based upon the cost of serving that rate class. And, you know, I get the argument, especially with three-phase users, is that the cost more to serve them.
Must've repaid NMPP whether it was to do the survey.
To do a four-year plan, we paid them $6,000. They were, you know, they were by far the least expensive option.
That was no recommendation.
Yeah, but at the same time, I'm not sure that it makes, that it makes it right. And I can understand that the three-phase customer, you know, according to their study, it says they need to be paying more. I'm more interested in the allocation across the small user to the big user, do you think that's...
I'm really concerned about the business ones, and not just for me. There's a lot of business in this town, and just hanging on by their teeth. We make each one of them, they're all equivalent to Farmer State Bank and what they're using. So, we're talking $300 a month for daydreamers, for artworks.
You see, no, but we're not, those are commercial accounts, not three-phase accounts.
But even in the commercial account, we're talking a big increase for those people. Do we kill land by doing that? And there's a good chance we do. I mean, I don't know what anybody's financial status is, but I know how hard it is to make a living in this country. That's a lot of, that's a lot of money.
I guess, I'd like to know where we're at with three-phase with other cities, I mean, we got three-phase out there where they're building the hotel, or building that road, and that heat. And if we were, you know, way more than, you know, Sack City or Carroll and...
Exactly, we're gonna do it there.
I mean, that's something I'd like to know, I guess. Maybe it costs us a little more to get there, but, I mean, you know, other towns could do it cheaper, because I don't know, I mean, I know it's based on what it costs us to run the power there, but if we're not competitive, we're not gonna get bigger, so.
I can get that, you know, pretty easy. NMPP provided that to us last time, and I'm sure they can do that again.
That's a big issue right now in Auburn.
Three-phase?
The cost.
So, when you look at this, though, as far as the allocation, does the overall, does the overall percent, the 11.9% increase strike you? Or does the specific allocation to a, to one sector over the other strike you as...
Well, it's probably the one sector over the other, because, you know, I know we're not, we're increasing everybody, but like I said, my daughter's gonna give up her seat, you're not even gonna know if it happened. And most, 90% of people, I guarantee you, that person who writes that other check, probably EVAPCO's gonna know what happened, too.
Do you have a list of your stuff? There's, by utility, I think, the next page is, there's the, the actual cost for you. Can you put the way that it is?
No.
I mean, it's not been high or low.
Scott, we have time, we don't have much time.
Rita, Wal...
Around the first of the year, but...
What's their numbers?
If we were ready to proceed at the next meeting, it may be that we could do this effective for usage after middle of December. But otherwise, more than likely, it's for usage after the middle of January. So, that would be the March 1st bill that the increase was...
Hey, Bill, when they figured out three-phase, did they...
So, we, we got a little bit of time.
Take it out like, you know, we're not busy out there with our pit, but again, we have all that infrastructure running out there, is that Jack around the average, or...
Well, those increases from last year, they...
No, because your customer charge is based mostly on that.
Yes, yep.
The infrastructure.
You're having the same discussion among you, though.
They basically look, Ben, like, you know, we lost one big customer here, and we gained one there, so it was basically a wash, you know?
No matter what you're selling, it really hasn't been bad.
Well, let me get some comparables, we'll show you the comparables on that.
But if we take it away somewhere, we gotta put it back in somewhere else.
Well, that's what other question is, do you want to, do you want to see some other proposals that doesn't, that doesn't hit the big users?
Well, let's just see the comparables, I think.
We got a little time, though.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want someone out there saying, okay, now that everybody, with a house, the U-race gotta go up twice what we said it was, so EVAPCO really doesn't, I don't want to do that.
And a four-way cheap one up in cities, I'll have no problem with.
See, they're basing it on this page here, that's what they're basing everything on.
You're gonna use by your target, by your target prices.
You know, how much you have in the venture for many years, so if you want to lower your target price, that's what they're gonna base everything on.
Right, right. I know, I know. Hard to sit here two hours, or an hour, or whatever we got.
Oh, absolutely.
At least thinking harder than I am.
So, are we maybe more comfortable with some rates next meeting?
Yeah, we'll come, I'll bring back some comparable rates on that. But also wanted to talk just briefly about water sewer, because we did say...
Remember, just one more thing, say, on the electric. A lot of utilities are going to just one rate, with 6 cents, no matter how many kilowatts you use. And some utilities are going even further than that. The more you use, the more it costs, and that's kind of what the trend's been, what we're seeing in the state. Because plus, the more power you buy, the more it costs, yeah. But, I mean, that's, this is, this is the standard way, what we do.
Just on water and sewer, we had said that we would have an annual adjustment of water and sewer rates equivalent to the consumer pricing. Okay, so, for the past 12 months, and this is October of 10 through September of 11, that is 3.49%. Currently, our base rate is $10.05, and this would, and it costs $4.05 for 1,000 gallons of water. And this would take it up to, from $10.05 for base to $10.50, and from $4.05 per thousand to $4.10, I think.
You got any idea where what it goes to our checking account?
The total dollars?
Yeah.
Kay, I had Kay run those for this past year and had some inconsistencies the one time she ran, so I wanted to run those again. But just, that's basically what we're dealing with, is, like I said, probably 45%, 45 cents increase in the base.
But, I mean, does that, our sewer fund is always underwater. Are we, are we close to it?
This will, this will, aside...
Do we, I mean, it seems like every year, we gotta, we gotta take money from somewhere else and put it in there.
Yeah.
And I don't want the electric rates to go up to cover some of these sewer.
Yeah, which they don't, you know, anything in the electric fund...
No, what I'm saying is, we're taking that money from somewhere to cover that account, if it doesn't, doesn't pay its own way.
We've done projects like that through sales tax, that's true.
That also matters.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I say, I had Kay run these, these numbers just on Friday, and the one time we ran, it didn't, it had some inconsistencies I wanted to review before, before I brought them to the council. But the number, I guess, here is 3.9%. And I'll come, I'll have numbers next time, too, that show you the dollars on that, because it was significant. But I hate to even tell you, because I don't recall what they are.
We'll go through that next meeting?
Yep.
You gotta do garbage, too.
Uh, you know, we didn't propose any annual adjustment in there. And for now, it's...
It's underwater?
It's underwater for the money. And I'm sure we'll, we'll take a look at that again during...
We're gonna go right up there.
We'll, we'll look at that again during a bunch of time, but for now, everything is kind of okay, other than any updates on landfill stuff.
The recycling issue, all against Carroll, and getting more finite numbers from RUD, seeing what it would cost, just to truck it down there. And hopefully, our next landfill meeting, he'll get some better numbers, and we'll have tonnages, and see what it's gonna cost extra cities. And as they talk Sack City, it's gonna cost them more, obviously, to truck it than it is just to take it right into Howard Center. But in the meantime, Howard Center's costs have really gone down, what it costs per ton to recycle. So, maybe by the time we hit that point, everything will be back to where it was four or five years ago, and we won't need to, I don't know, I guess, as far as that. We're still looking at that. This year, we raised the tipping fee, but the per capita stayed the same, I believe, right, for landfill?
I thought it was, yeah, you might be right.
And we raised tipping fee $2, so, but we raised garbage bags to cover that, so I don't think we'll have to raise garbage for ours.
I think, we're, we're okay.
Our contract for RUD didn't change, and so, we should be good.
What I like about you, Dave, you know your garbage.
He's a trash talker.
Yeah.
Um, a couple things, boy. Tim was in this morning, and had heard from Jeanette Green.
Oh, he was, he was the only one.
Okay. I guess, and Tim just asked for a little history on what we had done on that sewer landfill. So, this is the history of it of the past several years, and basically, it's an annual cleaning of the line. And then, we had, this past year, in June, we had Kenny Harms come, kind of clean, clean it out and get rid of the blockage on June 6th. But then, on June 30th, we did have Pete Howe back in town, who went through, cleaned it out, and did all of the root cutting, so the roots were, roots were cut out of there.
How many times, Scott, did she come down here that you can remember complaining about her basement getting flooded? She told me four.
Over the course of the years?
Yeah.
And I don't, and I just don't, I don't...
Oh, I, she just said to me, this is the fourth time.
I don't recall that.
Which told me three times in one week, so, I don't know, if that's the way she's telling them, or not.
I guess what my concern is, is if she complained, and we didn't fix it, and did it again, then I believe we probably are at fault. But if she complained, and we went out and we fixed it, or we thought we had it fixed, and I don't know what we're at fault.
See, that's, at, at minimum, that's what I would say, is that when she, when, if she would have some backup, we went up there and attempted to take care of it. And in this case, we used Kenny that time, and it didn't get rid of all the ruts.
When he went down, did he find the roots, or did this Howe cut the root?
Well, Kenny knew they were down, do you recall that, Jack?
See, the first time, I think she had Kenny go down hers, and then ours, about a day later, I think ours backed up. Sometimes, we're the root, you know, we've, it all ends up in our line. But then, but we got our eight-inch root cutter down.
Yeah.
And then we put some rutex down, and...
And then we put some rutex down it, and we get the schoolhouse too. So that, you know, that can be a problem sometimes.
Well, I know we're going to have problems. I guess my concern is, did we do what we were supposed to do to make sure it wasn't going to happen to her again? So, because she's got a legitimate.
Right, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'd be mad too.
Yeah.
If that happens and we didn't know there was a problem. But what I, what I want to be able to tell her is, we did everything we could do to make sure it wasn't going to happen again. We had no idea this was going to happen to you. Because she's going to call me tomorrow morning.
Right, and when Pete Howe comes into town to our maintenance, we're taking through that line every year. Because it's been a problem for.
We've done that for how long?
Twenty years. Well, we haven't had Pete Howe for twenty years. I mean, but when they come into town, we always pretty much run that line.
Because we've had problems.
Because we know we've had problems.
I pulled out the maps from, from four years ago, and we've done it every year.
Has her attorney sent us anything?
Yep, he sent us, he sent us a letter expressing concern.
And that's it?
Didn't ask for anything. It said, it says.
Was she sued?
You know, she would, I'm sure she would have accepted some charges for cleanup or something like that.
Okay, well, according to what she told me, Jerry, is, her attorney's still working on it, he hadn't heard nothing.
He hasn't heard anything.
So I don't know if, were we supposed to send him a letter?
I am sure that's true. No, not necessarily. Our insurance company has, has considered it and denied it.
No, she was pretty upset, fact that she keeps, she told me she calls her attorney every week to see if it's hurting anything, well, this time's gone by and we haven't responded anyway whatsoever.
That's true that I hadn't responded. But our attorney, our insurance company has, as far as denying the claim.
She couldn't, she didn't have any idea, either the attorney, you know, what the insurance did or anything.
Did the insurance company send out something doing this fast for us?
Did they send you a copy of the letter that, showing that she denied it?
Yes.
You have it, you have it on file?
I see that already, and the insurance company denied it. I assume they, I assume they kind of consider it like an act of God, in a sense.
Yeah, basically, the city has immunity on sewer backups, unless we're negligent.
I think.
And that's where I think Tim's coming from. I mean, we sat there and done nothing, we're negligent, you know, in a sense. I mean, more or less. I mean, part of the problem is, like, what you guys said, well, it comes from the school, and there's, who knows what comes out there every day.
Is there anything more we can do?
She has almost one in the neighborhood. I mean, everything's kind of cool right down there at the bottom of the hill.
I think there's tree roots that her joint, or somewhere near.
What's that?
Where the, where their line comes in is, there must be a little tree root problem there. But, you know, I don't know if we rutexed it every year. I think we did this year.
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of the problem comes from the neighbor next door telling her there's a collapsed line in there.
Well, that's part of the issue.
And there isn't, because he took an eight inch cutter right through there. Pete Howe did, and he's, because he, what's the guy's name? I can't.
Jason?
No, on the corner.
Porter.
Porter. Rich comes down there, and I was up there. He says, that line's collapsed. And, and Jason from Pete House says, I just took this set of cutters through there. It will not go through there if there's a collapsed line. He said, it isn't a collapsed line. And of course, Porter's, you know, I'm sure he's telling her that.
Exactly.
You know, and that ain't helping things. It's a kind of a public relation deal, really, but I mean, it, you know, I was in her basement, guys, I don't know what she's asking for carpet, but it was like a ten by ten chunk of carpet. My gosh, you can buy her a piece of carpet for two hundred dollars. You know, it wasn't tacked down, it was just laying down there. Because I rolled it back.
Can you put one of those balls in there to back stuff?
Well, she could, she probably could put a check ball. I mean, it isn't going to stop everything. If you don't go down your basement and check it, how do you know when it's backed up?
And then it can seep up and.
And then it starts seeping up through them, you know? There's really no fail safe way with a check ball. I mean, like Wall Lake where they've had problems, I think they put a ball, you can shut it off completely with a ball valve.
Or gate valve.
A gate valve or ball valve, and, you know, like, I think Kay's dad did that, because she had, he had a problem with it backing up. But, I mean, it ain't a maintenance, I mean, we've done what we think we should be doing, but.
Tomorrow, can you touch base with her? Because I don't know if, I mean, if you guys is playing.
Well, no, she's going to call me. And that's fine. And, and here's what I think I'm going to tell her, is, it's the council's feeling that we're now responsible. Has anybody got a problem with me saying that?
Should it be coming from Scott?
She ain't going to call Scott. She's going to call me. She has my phone. And I'm not going to, and I'm not going to put it off and say, call Scott. Because that's, that's not.
Well, we've done, every year we've done calling this.
And I'll just tell her to my field. Call you guys.
She calls me, and my daughter calls Scott. It's not my job.
Yeah. It is kind of our job, because that's, when you go to the, you're supposed to respond to what they say, right?
Could you give her a copy of this? Would that help a little, show that?
I don't think that will. I just, I kind of want us, the whole council to know what was going on, sort of, next week. Because she's on its gate right now. Because they asked her to just be here.
Because then if it's her.
But if maybe next week she is around.
Then she don't have.
She comes in here screaming, and then we'll all be surprised.
The insurance company.
She knew the insurance company had turned it down. She told me.
She probably told me the insurance, or the attorney has no idea what their results are.
I don't, it doesn't sound like they're getting any information.
It's done over the phone. You know, they, they, they call and ask us about our maintenance on it.
I had the same issue, they, they denied it, paid for it.
So do you need to be the one to correspond with Chuck, Chulte?
Sure, well, we try.
Well, no, I'm just asking if you, are you supposed to be if we're receiving?
Well, apparently that might help her.
Send her a letter, sorry.
I don't.
I talked to her, she's about as upset about that as, no, no response, and she wasn't on the sewer itself.
I think not hearing, and we have no one, lack of communication. Probably use the PR.
Took forty-five minutes to get that across to me. Because I don't, I don't know two houses from us. Makes a difference.
Okay. Another one that's not too good is this Boulder's Drive replacement of the cracked panels issue. Basically, we've had no contact with Dave King. Our, our engineer has contacted him about replacing all of the panels, and again, just basically no response from him. Time wise, it's going to be where we probably don't want him to replace those panels anymore this year.
Seems to me we had the same kind of problem with another construction. I mean, we sent him a letter saying we're going to hire somebody else to fix it and charge him for it. That seemed to be the problem, but maybe that's what we do with it.
We got their attention. How much bond do we have against it?
For, the bond's worth the entire amount of the project. So it's two hundred and something thousand.
Has the bond company been contacted?
No. I think that's the next step.
Would that hurt to do that? Yeah.
No, you know, I've, I've never had to do that before, to contact the bond company, but I don't think it hurts a thing.
Tell the bond company, they'll get a hold of them.
Just phone lunch, that works.
If I can do that, I, you know, I think that's appropriate, to let them know what's going on.
When is the time on the bond?
In the next June or something like that.
More panels.
It can be done next, under the.
Under the current bond.
Under the current bond, yeah, yep.
Put them on those, put all those.
Yep, will do. Had that note in the, in the memo about that, that fireplace out on Crescent Park Drive. This is it.
What is supposed to be a fireplace?
I've never heard that referred to as ours, but it, it probably sits on public property. Anything on, looking at that, what would be the lakeside of that sidewalk is all public property.
What are the little four posts with the bear on them?
I think it's some sort of wildlife view or something like that she just put out there.
Oh, okay.
Some completely different.
Do we have rocks for the next bench?
I sense a page.
There's a shoreline that probably needs them somewhere.
Ten.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'd like to just remove that. Is that, so is there any problems for anybody?
I'd go by it.
So that, I did, I didn't, I thought it was part of the other property. I never did, that's.
Well, I'm not just absolutely sure whose it is, but I would tell you that it sits on public property, so.
And the, the people who own the house, they want it, right?
Yes, yeah.
Say those rocks are for me.
I bet they have them up in the.
Shoreline. We had a little discussion with, with some community club members about what to, to do with the, trying to continue a community coordinator position that Emily had done. So what did we come up with on that?
Basically, we, we kind of remarked money from.
Hotel motel taxes.
Hotel motel taxes. Then approached the community club to part of the bill, and then try to hire somebody hourly.
Well, they, no, I don't think they were looking at another salary deal.
Salary deal, whatever, but tried to advertise that and see how that would come out, come out about it. I think it's a good deal, I don't know. Let, keep the community club involved more, let them run the show, basically, how they want to do it. Kind of remarked some money that way towards it. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
Have you been understanding to say it was successful? I think we have a honest word. I'd say so. If you know, it's maybe somewhere right in the community that has, has, you know, education and expertise to continue.
If you got names, let us know.
Well, yeah, well, no, until they advertise, I mean, you know, you might, you never know. People move in all the time, you don't know what they, what their education or what their skills are.
Well, and a nice thing is that Emily still sets you, you know.
Transition?
Yeah, help out with that. A lot of the base has been laid out of what you'd be doing, we need just someone who can do all the little running stuff and do all that, so.
You know, for why I've always thought Ted had a lot of that talent, but I'm not sure she has the time and spring a hot helmet. Ted's one. She's very talented, very marketable. She sells, she can sell anything.
What, what did we contribute last year?
Eight thousand dollars. That, the amount of the hotel motel tax was, I believe, sixty-six hundred dollars.
And then, community club put in?
They put in four thousand.
That's why they gave up that thousand dollars.
So we'll be talking to that community club meeting again next Monday. Bringing this, bringing this issue up to them again about, you know, do we want to continue to, to have a person in this, in this position? And I think, our committee at least, which was Ben Whitey, the mayor, and then Cora and Vicky, Emily, anyway, they thought that it was, you know, very successful and, and wanted to do what we could, try to continue this in some form. Needing to really better define exactly what it would be to, because if, the position wouldn't be the same, you know, as what it would have been. Just last couple things, Wednesday night is Sack County League, it's over in Wall Lake. Who's up for Sack County League?
I'll go in.
And you're thinking you're going to go?
Yeah.
I might make that.
Very good.
Good.
Can I have somebody finish taking minutes from the meeting if I have to bug out a little early?
You've got the best hand, right?
Sounds like a bear to me. I'm not sure.
Yeah, date that night.
I'm presenting up at the conservation board, the, the stuff from the sock rail trip. And their meeting starts at seven thirty, so I'm going to miss a little bit of the Sack County League.
Because I'm talking about abatements.
That's the program for the night at Sack County League is nuisance abatement.
My favorite.
Nuance abatement. Warren Bush is going to discuss that. Kind of, I, the program should be good, it's kind of like, what would Warren really like to see as magistrate? What's he want to see when something comes up for, for a nuisance abatement?
What's our worry think about that?
Well, I think it's great. For the city of Litten, I have two abatements. One is to acquire it by ownership, or we're going to try to buy it. And then, when the city does that, there's a statute that allows you to buy it free of any liens. So there's a beat up old house in Litten, and tons of liens against it. So we can, we get, we're in that auction off, and buy it for a dollar, and then sell it to the neighbor who wants it, and he'll tear it down there.
What's that do to the lien holder?
They don't want it.
They're just out?
They're out. They don't want it. But there's the protection from the city, they get it for you.
Wow. Should have had that on the hotel.
And so the, well, the part of that problem, the hotel, is he kept hiding it.
Oh, I know that, he was hiding out in China and.
The other thing then is, our Thursday evening tourism award party to get together. And we certainly do want everybody to go on over to the Legion Hall at five thirty, and have a little celebration about our Tourism Community of the Year Award. Just really an informal social gathering, CDI is, is sponsoring this. But if we can have some folks around to, to pour drinks and, and tend to the appetizers.
I want to tend those, I want to drink to them.
Tim stood and be gone, New York's a long ways.
Oh, man, man.
But my wife will be there, and my daughter is going to take care of what we talk to daughter later.
Okay.
So if you have any ideas on how much of everything you want, that's great, otherwise we'll bring way too much, and you bring back what you don't want.
Okay. Because I, well, I'm figuring that there's going to be a hundred people show up this time. Certainly do hope.
I suppose I could help Tim, but.
You can.
Yeah.
Well, I'm good.
Plus for you, less for me, whatever.
I'm not sure how that works, but I'll figure it out.
Now, all you need is just a can of beer, you don't need anything fancy, and then the basic mixed drink stuff, and some wine.